For November the 17th, we normally start our meetings with an invitation and a pledge to the flag. If you'd like to join us, please stand. Ms. Lawrence?
My.
Heavenly Father, as we come before you this evening, once again, dear Father, we ask that you bless those individuals in Paris, the 129 who lost their lives, bless their families. We also ask that you bless the 352 who were injured. Father, help us to learn to live and respect human lives. As we move forward here on this island, help us to realize the beauty that we have here and how we can take care of it if we utilize things in a proper manner. We ask that you bless this commission. Bless those who have come, the islanders. And dear God, as we move forward, let us move forward in an organized manner. These blessings we ask in thy precious name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to read our meeting procedures. The planning commission hears requests for preliminary subdivision plaits and site plans. The planning commission conducts public hearings on rezoning, certain planning documents, and ordinance amendments. The planning commission makes final decision on preliminary plaits and site plans and makes recommendations to the board of commissioners on all other items. The planning staff presents a case to the planning commission during a staff report. This report evaluates how the proposal conforms to the Glen County Comprehensive Plan, zoning ordinance, and other applicable regulations. The applicant shall have the opportunity to present their request to the planning commission. It is responsibility of the applicant to make a presentation on the request and to address any conditions or factual findings with which they do not agree. Citizens desiring to speak in favor of and opposition to the request may then address the planning commission. Group should select a spokesperson who may ask the group to stand to be recognized. The chairman may terminate testimony if it becomes repetitive. The chairman will terminate at speaker's time as the speaker begins personal attacks. The applicant may then provide a rebuttal to any testimony. The chair will ensure that each side has approximately equal time. Minutes, we have minutes that we've given to you tonight. Anybody have any corrections or additions to those minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I suggest we defer approval of these until we have had a chance to read them.
Any objections to deferring those to the next meeting?
I second.
All those in favor signify by raising hands. Can you raise your hands, excuse me? Can't vote like that. Okay, we'll look at them next time. Any postpones?
Yes, sir. We have two requested by the applicant and one requested by staff. The two that are requested by the applicant are PP 3105, which is Stillwater Phase 3, and PP 3106, which is Brick Hill Subdivision. Both of those are requested by the applicant to be deferred until the January 19 regular meeting.
Do we need to approve that?
Yes, sir. Acknowledge their request.
Got a motion to defer PP 3105 and PP 3106 until the January meeting?
3124, what?
Are these two up here?
3105 and 3106.
These two first.
3105 and 3106.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by raising hands. Approved. Yes, sir. What's the other one?
This is a request by staff to defer SP 3124 AVA to Plaza until the December meeting.
So moved.
We got a motion to defer SP 3124 AVA to Plaza until the next meeting?
Yes, sir, the December meeting.
The December meeting?
I second it.
Got a second? Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor signify by raising hands. Unanimous. Anything else?
No, sir. The remainder of the agenda would stand as posted.
I've had a request from VP 3143, 544 Magnolia Avenue, to move it up on a medical reason. Is there any objections to that?
No, sir.
Do we need a motion to move that up to the agenda? We'll move it up to the next place?
So moved.
VP 3143, 544 Magnolia Avenue. Got a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by raising hands. They will move that up. So the first item on the agenda then will be VP 3143, 544 Magnolia Avenue. I know it's messing y'all up, but you'll handle it. Consider request to approve the demolition of an existing building and propose new construction of a single-family home at 544 Magnolia Avenue. The subject parcel is approximately .15 acres. The property is owned Village Residential and is located in Island Preservation District, parcel ID 0404691. Ed McChella, owner and applicant.
Good evening. My name is Julie Graham. I'm a planner with Glen County. This parcel is located on the south side of Magnolia Avenue and approximately 200 feet from its intersection with Neptune Way. This is a view of the existing structure that the applicant, Mr. McChella, is requesting to demolish and build a new residence consistent with the adjacent homes. The live oak seen here will remain on the site. The house was built in 1953 and is in a state of disrepair due to the lack of maintenance and falling tree limbs. Notice damage in the upper-left photo. This is a result of falling tree limbs from the water oak. The upper-right photo shows the age of the roof sloping into the second floor of the home. On the bottom row, from left to right, this is a hole in the existing roof, a fallen water oak branch resting on the house, and two trees, a pine and a water oak, that the applicant is requesting to remove. This is looking east across Magnolia Avenue, and the proposed construction will look similar to the cottage on the right. This is the proposed building plan. This is the proposed front and rear elevations. This is the portion of Don Gardner's letter stating approval of removing the water oak due to its age and condition. This is the proposed demo tree removal plan. Here's the proposed new construction and landscape plan. VP 3143, consider a request to approve the demolition of an existing building and propose new construction of a single-family home at the site. Staff believes the submitted application for the demolition and design review of the proposed single-family dwelling meets all ordinance requirements. Your possible motions are to approve VP application, VP, sorry, 3143. I move to approve application with conditions. I move to defer or I move to deny. Do you have any questions for myself or the applicant?
Questions of staff.
Has the staff made any provisions to protect the live oak trees in the front and the Magnolia from destruction during construction?
The ordinance will require them to fence them off with a protective orange fencing.
But admire Mr. McChella for protecting trees before he built.
Yes, sir.
Staff, I had a question. Dr. Gardner's letter says there are three live oaks in the front of the property, and the drawings only have two. Where's the third one?
I have a question of that, too. Maybe Mr. McChella, the applicant, can address where the third live oak is in the front.
We'll wait till he gets up and he can answer that. Okay. Any other question of staff? Delica, would you like to make a presentation, sir?
To answer your question about the live oaks in the front, they're all going to remain on the property. All I'm going to do is just trim them back with the dead branches right there. There's one on the property line to the left of the property next door, and there's two in the front. And they're all going to remain. All I'm going to do is when John's maintenance comes in, to clean the trees up so they're more healthy and cut the dead stuff out to do that. Other than that, they're everything's staying there.
Okay, so the third one was probably the one that's on the property line?
Next door, to the north, yes, or to the left.
Any other questions of applicant? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Somebody looking for a motion?
Okay, go ahead.
I guess.
I move to approve Village Preservation Application, VP 3143.
I second. Got a motion in a second. This is not a public hearing, but we do open it up for any questions you might have of us. Anybody have any questions? Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Soon you're ready to vote. All in favor of the motion signify by raising hands. Unanimous. Thank you, sir. We'll go back now to the first item on our agenda, which is PP 3104, Tabby Place, Phase 2. Consider preliminary plat approval for a 49-lot subdivision. The parcels are zoned R6, One Family Residential, and PD Plan Development. The proposed development is located on the southeast corner of North Harrington Road and Harrington Lane, parcel ID 0405291, 0405290, and a portion of 0405319, placate with Oak Plantation Group LLC, applicant and owner.
Mr. Chairman, I want to do this for Casey tonight because she's out ill. You had before you a preliminary plat request located in the Harrington subdivision. North Harrington is to the north of it. Harrington Lane is to the east of it. It is zoned R6. It is commonly known as Tabby Place Phase 2. Tabby Place Phase 1 is in this location. Here, it is subject to an expedited plat process because it's on an existing road. It does meet the requirement that was newly approved for the two entrances for more than 25 lots. This is an area between the two existing subdivisions that is reserved for drainage for that. There may be additional. This is a picture of the site area. The trees shown are out on right-of-way in this location and in this location. This is Tabby Place Phase 2. This is Harrington. I am in this area, so. It's a preliminary plat for a 49-lot subdivision. The parcels are currently undeveloped and zoned R6 and PD. The smallest parcel is 6,000 square feet. There are two proposed entrances, one on North Harrington and one on Harrington Lane. This is the Joint Water and Sewer position on the situation. You have a letter that was hand-delivered by the chairman of the Joint Water and Sewer Commission tonight regarding their position on this to update you from the October letter that you received that night. Staff believes that the preliminary plat does not, because of that reason, does not meet all ordinance requirements necessary for approval. But you have the option under there to do as you see on there. There's three possible motions on this one, about approval, deferral, or denial of the application, and that's staff's request. You should use the 3104. We have some old numbers in this system on this one, so use the 3104 if you're going to make a motion regarding the number on this one. If you have any questions, I can address those questions.
Any questions of staff?
Mr. Hanley, there's really nothing in the ordinance that refers to the situation that we're dealing with now with the Joint Water and Sewer Commission. We're just talking about a preliminary plat, and we're talking to the developer to secure all that in the future, correct?
Yes, there is provision in there that he's not fully compliant with. His plat was submitted with R6 stating that he was going to have public water and public sewer. If it is approved with those conditions, then it is incumbent upon him to secure the approval from Joint Water and Sewer for those utilities.
Correct.
So that would be the provision that's in the subdivision ordinance to cover those.
Any other questions of staff?
I have one question for a point of clarification. The ingress and egress going out onto Harrington Lane and North Harrington Road, will they be going into what we consider to be a collector's street?
By current definition, they may be deemed a collector's street, although it's been expressed to me that the collector's street definition is too broadly written as of right now, that it may include a number of streets, particularly in the older part of the island, that are not meant to be collector's streets. So technically, yes, it does by definition right now meet the collector's street provisions, which would trigger a buffer along those streets.
Absolutely.
Where's the buffer?
Let me, I guess I'd hopefully, I have a real concern with calling that a collector's street. You call that a collector's street and do what was written in this, expand them all to 70 feet, we're going to have to expand 50 roads on St. Simon's and take people's property. I don't see how you can call that little street, crossways, a collector's street. That looks to me like that's a minor street between two roads that go into Federica Road.
I would be inclined to disagree with you primarily because of the other, all the streets or developments, they have pre-existing use, so they would not have to conform. It would be the new ones that would have to conform.
Okay, why would this one have to be?
Because it's new.
This road is not new. The road's been there.
The development is.
The road is there and it got houses on it. And so you're going to have to take property away from the other houses. You're going to have to, sure, get a 70-foot road, you got to get five of it from the other people. You're going to have to go in there and take property away from those people, and that's what you got to do all over this island. Mr. Chairman, I have a question, staff.
Mr. Hanley, where is the definition for collector's street in our ordinance? It's in 613 now. It's in 3, no, I should say 302. It was in the recently passed amendment to the BOPR requirement. It's in 302, which is the definition section.
We don't have that yet.
Also in the subdivision ordinance, yes.
The subdivision, right.
Yes, and if you give me a chance, I will tell you what section it's in.
Yeah, let's, just so we're all clear, I think it's, I mean, this is a good test, and let's take a minute and make sure we all know what we're talking about.
It's in, on page 6 in the subdivision regulations, which is 501 definitions.
Those streets which carry traffic from minor or sub-collector streets to the major system of arterial streets and highways, and those streets serving commercial and industrial areas, collector's streets should be designed to have a limited residential frontage. Is that the definition we're operating under, do you think, for this plat? I realize there's been other things that have happened since.
Yes, sir. It was more into the zoning regs.
So, so the streets inside Tabby Place are considered minor, I would assume?
Yes.
And then the streets, Harrington Lane would be considered a sub-collector then by this definition?
There is no classification for a sub-collector. It's a collector, carrier, or minor.
Well, it says those streets which carry traffic from minor or sub-collector streets.
I know, but there's not a definition for a sub-collector street in any of the ordinances, so.
All right, so we don't have. So.
I just have, you know, to me, if you call that a collector's street and require it to 70 foot wide.
Well, is that, but.
That's what it says.
Well, that's not, that's what I'm asking. Is a collector's street required to be 70 feet wide?
Yes, sir. Back in the road standards, it requires additional right-of-way and additional pavement width.
Okay, all right. So, all right, I get it.
So that's a real problem all over the island.
Right.
Federica, what?
Well, the next one, the one we have down, another one we have, and we go to Glen Oaks.
If you go to that one, that's going into Demery Road, what are you going to call that? A minor street that turns into a major highway? That's collector's street. That's a collector's street, it's got to be 70 foot wide, and it's 40 feet.
Well, our issue is a buffer, correct?
Well, our issue is if you call it a collector, it's going to have to go to 70 feet wide.
Well, our issue, though, is.
And then you got a buffer besides that.
Right. So I would suggest we hear from the applicant as to what he's doing around Harrington Lane and North Harrington Road in way of, he's got, he set aside some common area there for something. I'd be interested to hear what he's got planned.
Take 20 feet.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine.
These were questions of staff. We'll get the other fellow to answer to that. Any other questions of staff?
I have a question. Historically, when the county needed to widen the road, have they not taken property from private owners, private property to widen the road?
In the nine years I've been here, the county has taken property from a subdivision one time, and that was to widen Highway 99 and the Spur Extension.
They took it for MLK, too.
That'd be in the city.
That'd be in the city.
They took it.
You were speaking of the nine years that you've been here, but I know, I can tell you about Demery Road, they've taken property, they've taken property on Federica Road. So, I mean, what's the issue?
Any other questions of staff? Make a presentation. Applicant?
Yes, thank you. For the record, my name's Bobby Shoup. I'm the surveyor that prepared the preliminary plat. It's before you. We have tonight, the developers here and the engineers are here. Would be happy to answer any questions. To the best of my knowledge and belief, this plat complies with the subdivision and zoning ordinance, and we'll be glad to answer any questions you might have. Respectfully request your approval.
First question maybe is what Mr. Osri asked about.
Yeah, I have a question, and it may be more for the developer than the surveyor, and that's, Mr. Kate, it appears that there is a small area set aside for something along North Harrington and Harrington Lane. What is that? Yeah, just that, you've got about a three-foot, you've got a small area. Are you planning on some sort of buffer or weance or something there?
Been working with Mr. Hanley and his staff on various issues. One was to create a buffer there, which we were going to create a buffer like this new ordinance requires, but once again, we were in for this permit before new ordinances were put in place, so we were told not to do that. Also, we were told not to put the buffer on there because it would cause a domino effect like Mr. Kirkendall applies, is talking about. If we put the buffer on this street and called that a collector, it causes this domino effect that I don't think Mr. Hanley and staff really can deal with and want to deal with. So we submitted it this way, but what that three feet is, what that three feet is, is they want to require double setbacks. They want a 25-foot setback off that road, the Harrington Lane, and a 20-foot setback off the interior road. So to do that, we gave up three feet of buffer, so it's not a double setback.
Understand, but.
And that's where the fence will go, and it'll be common area within the subdivision, so the fence will be maintained by the HOA.
Now, is the fence something that you're going to install?
Yeah, we'll install it soon as we get approval. We'll, you know, it'll be technical.
Is there going to be a few plants there, too?
Yeah, we'll landscape the road shoulder and buffer it out because the houses will back up that way, so we need to buffer it out because people, it's hard to talk about it.
So essentially, you're going to provide some sort of visual barrier between the back of the house.
Yeah, tabby columns with panel fencing all the way around, in the three-foot.
Right.
Yeah, so, you know, the L there on the corner of the road going in both directions will be a fence.
Right, is that something that you would commit to?
Yeah, we're doing it, yes, sir. I'll start as soon as we get going. Clean it up. We have to do it.
I think the issue and the intent is that the buffer would be some sort of visual barrier between the street and the back of houses, and that can be accomplished in numerous ways. A fence would certainly be one, and a few plants.
It'd be called a Class C, right, if we did the impervious fence buffer?
A D, I think, but, but you're trying to meet the intent, is what I'm asking, correct?
Is that going to be a six-foot fence?
Yes, ma'am. Probably seven-foot column with six-foot fence in between it, and then landscaped staggered down in front, you know, be hedge, then azaleas or whatever tapering down to the ground like we always do.
Yeah, well, right.
I mean, it'd be a studded road shoulder with like azaleas or hydrangeas or some kind of two- or three-foot plant, then a hedge and an impervious fence.
If that's something that you could work at, I know we do have some regulations against plants in the right-of-way, but is that something we could?
He would have to get a right-of-way permit.
But that's something that the planning staff could work with Mr. Kate on to try to.
We permitted his.
He permits some point.
Before, on right-of-way.
Okay, so that's something that is possible.
And like the yacht club entrance, you know, we landscaped all that out, that's all right-of-way permitted.
And, right, so hopefully, regardless of how this comes out, you'll meet the intent for that.
Oh, yes, sir. We'd meet the intent either by distance or by impervious fence with plantings.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant?
I have one. I believe last month, there was some concern about drainage. Could you address the drainage in the rear area, please?
There's two alternatives to drainage on this site, which we will be submitting plans and reviewed at the next step. One is onsite retention, which we have, would probably take a couple of lots in this area there and behind those lots in the expedited plat portion that I pointed to earlier. That would be onsite retention. That's one alternative that we've set up for. Another alternative is to work with the county and replace the pipe that runs down North Harrington, probably three-quarters of the way or midway down, and place it to the marsh and make it, I think it's a 36-inch pipe, make it larger, 24, make it larger to handle capacity. That's not been done on this street, and most of it is self-contained with onsite retention. It'll be one or the other. We set it aside for onsite retention, but if the numbers work, we could do the line down the way.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant? Thank you. Commissioners?
I move to deny application, PP 3104, Tabby Place Phase 2. If I get a second, I'll address that issue.
I'll second it.
Have a second? Okay. Go ahead.
I think this is almost a travesty that we brought this thing before this way we did tonight. And I was all told before the meeting that certain commissioners had already agreed that they were going to support it, and the other ones trying to defend it at present time. time. I am insulted by that. It's clear that they do not have water and sewer service or sewer. We've got a letter from the chairman of the Joint Water and Sewer Commission saying they do not have the availability. We have clear stipulations in our ordinances about what a collector street is. Mr. Usri, we read that. This clearly meets the definition of a collector street. It has developments all up and down at North and South Harrington. It is clearly within the ordinances that there should be a buffer between the project and North Harrington. And to deny that is to fly in the faces of our own ordinances. I strongly oppose this.
All right, that's your opinion, that's fine. I disagree with that opinion, so that's fine, we got your difference of opinion.
Ask for discussion.
Yeah, discussion on the motion, yeah.
None, none from you, Mr. Chairman? Let's call the question.
Okay, well, no discussion. We have a motion on the floor to deny. All those in favor, signify with raise of hand. Three, all those opposed. Four to three, motion denied. Motion fails. Sostry?
I move to approve the preliminary plat for PP 3104, Tabby Place Phase Two. With such approval being conditioned upon and subject to the applicant receiving all necessary approvals from Brunswick-Glen County Water and Sewer Commission for the subdivision to be served by public water and sanitary sewer systems, and there being sufficient wastewater capacity to serve the subdivision in compliance with Environmental Protection Division of Georgia Department of Natural Resources regulations and all local ordinances, including the Glen County Code of Ordinances which pertains to water and sewer utilities. Notice of this conditional approval shall be provided to the applicant and placed on the preliminary plat.
A second. We have a motion and a second. Discussion on this motion, just, purpose of adding that is that... Is that to ensure that if they go forward with the project, they know that they have to have approval of sewer, and that we aren't giving them approval for the project, and that they can go ahead and tie into the sewer, they must get approval before they can do any tie-ins?
An EPD approval, right?
Yeah, this is just preliminary plat, then they have to go through the final plat and construction approval. A lot more approvals other than this preliminary plat. This just gives them the right to say this is what it's gonna look like. Any discussion on that motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to have the record noted that Mr. Usri's motion was made from a pre-written document, which obviously reinforces the idea of collusion amongst the commission.
It doesn't, it does not do that. It's not collusion from within the commission. It is collusion with attorneys on how to do it, but that's fine. Let's go with the question.
Well, okay, I have a question, because if it's based on the attorneys, then why didn't we all discuss it? So that we all could possibly be in agreement? I mean, why just a select few? I mean, I'd like to have full knowledge to move forward in anything that we do.
Legal issues are not in Open Meetings Act. They're in executive sessions.
No, you don't have executive sessions.
You attended one, perhaps?
But you don't have executive sessions.
I didn't. I didn't talk to any attorneys. So, I call the question, Mr. Chairman. Any further discussion on it?
Does your motion require the construction of that fence that Mr. Kate alluded to?
Isn't that on the plan?
Mr. Chairman, I, I would, I would amend my motion to include, to include the, uh, the fence as described by Mr. Kate, uh, as being, as being a condition of this approval.
You got a motion and a second to add to that, to include the fence. We got, the question's been raised. All those in favor of the motion signify with the raise of hands. Four opposed. Three, motion carried. Should we answer some questions?
Well, you can.
If you have some questions, I'll be glad to open the floor to answer any questions you may have. Tell us, sir. Would you give your name, sir?
Yeah, my name's Burke Harrison, 253 Villager Drive, St. Simon Island.
All of these lots back here, all of these rooftops, where's that water gonna drain to? This is the swamp back here that fills up every time it rains. And who can I sue when that, uh, does overflow?
Yeah, he's asking this. Would you mind answering that, sir?
Yeah, I wanted, when I was asking the engineer, could you...
Well, yeah, you have to ask those questions, and we'll give an answer for you. Would one of y'all like to answer that?
That'll get worked out under the construction plan.
Do you even know what I'm talking about? Have you even looked at the swamp back there?
We have.
It'll be, it'll be covered in, in the construction plans.
Second question I've got is, y'all were talking about the right of way, 60 foot, you were saying 70 foot. I guess that's a Glen County corridor, is that...
Yes, sir.
So, who, who do we go to to get that changed? Because that shouldn't be an issue, but we're only talking about, this is already 60 feet. You're talking about taking either five foot on this main road over here, 'cause this is a collector street. You've got probably 80, 90 houses within a block of here.
That, that's the problem.
So, that's, uh, but you can already ask for more buffer there and have the developer do something about it. Third question I've got is, are there any impact fees that are ever imposed on this island for my traffic lights? Or for sewer, the sewer problem we're having?
Impact. Glen County does not have impact fees at this time.
See, right now, this, this is a group of people trying to incorporate this island. I don't agree with it. I'm a native. I was born and raised on this island. And, uh, this is what's causing this to happen, is things like this that are being allowed to go on, because this is gonna put two, 196 cars a day out on Frederica Road, if you know the traffic studies. And I only know the traffic study with John, there's probably none.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question about this as well. I believe the county attorney will concur on the following deficiencies. Mr. Shoup, Jane Forts, Sea Island. Mr. Shoup did not sign or date the certificate of preliminary design. That is a requirement before you can vote on it. Mr. Shoup did not place his, he placed his stamp at the bottom of the preliminary plat, but it is not countersungled by him. As others have said, it does not address water and sewer utilities. Mr. Hanley has not provided his certification, nor should he have done so on the application. You can't vote on an application that hasn't been approved and that is incomplete. The application for preliminary plat approval should not have been assessed in the first place. It's incomplete. I believe the county attorney, who happens to not be here tonight, would concur.
I don't know if that's, I mean, they're always signed after the fact, not before you...
Yeah, they always sign them after they're approved.
I would like to speak for this, we had our...
Questions, please.
All right, I'll ask it as a question.
This is not a public hearing. We're just looking to answer questions about this subdivision.
Julian Smith, 61, Maxwell Avenue, St. Simon's Island. My question is, why, Mr. Kirkendall, do you insist on running meetings in this way, that you don't allow any kind of public comment before you make a, really, a predetermined decision? Uh, Mr. Houghes raised a very significant issue. Uh, this is a completely, why do you find it necessary to approve a 39 lot subdivision on an island where there are seven or eight or perhaps even 900 vacant lots already planted that haven't been built on? Why are you allowing developers to put into their piggy bank approved plats? I could ask a lot more questions, but why do we have to put up with this kind of half-assed stuff? Thank you.
Answer part of that, Mr. Smith. This is not a public hearing, and we do not have to allow any discussion from the public on these issues, and we are, we do allow public input. We do allow you to ask questions. We do not have to, we'll move on to the next item.
It would be useful to have the questions from the audience, from the public, before you made your decision. Thank you, sir.
That's when we have a public hearing, this preliminary, anyway, that's fine. We have that. The next item on the agenda is PP 3145, Glen Oaks. Consider approval of a preliminary plat for a 10 lot subdivision on 2.49 acres. The proposed subdivision is located on St. Simon's Island, along Demery Road, directly across from Thompson Cove, partial ID 0403571, 1317 Demery LLC. Applicant and over.
Good evening, Commissioners. Call, first up, planning with Glen County. I am here to present to you tonight Glen Oaks subdivision. Uh, this is the location, you can see across the, on the screen there, it is direct, on Demery Road, directly across from Thompson Cove. And it is a single lot, which will be, which is proposed to be divided into 10 lot subdivision, R6 zoning, currently undeveloped. This is a shot of the property dead on. You can see there it is in the back there, completely undeveloped and overgrown. This is a shot looking north. Again, the property's gonna be on your left-hand side there. And then this is from the property looking east toward Thompson Cove. And the preliminary, the preliminary plat is for a new subdivision proposed to divide this 2.49 acre piece of property into 10 separate lots, the smallest of which would be 6,000 square feet. Uh, this, these do comply with the minimum lot sizes for the R6 zoning. And they would be serviced from a proposed new road referred to as Glen Oaks Lane. You can see that, again, this is to consider that preliminary plat approval, R6 zoning intended for single-family residential use, one on each lot, and access would be off of Glen Oaks, and the property's going to be serviced by Brunswick-Glen Joint Water and Sewer, and this is south of the, of the 2032 lift station, so this does, there is sufficient capacity for this, based on JWSC. Here are your possible actions. Approve, defer, or deny the application, and I will be happy to entertain any questions.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
That particular area is very dangerous because it's, the sidewalk as it currently is, is very narrow.
Mm-hmm.
And there isn't anything to, often cars drive there.
Yes, ma'am.
So, if this is approved, who is going to address that issue?
Um, I would, the developer would have to address any kind of entrance and exit with the engineering department of public works in order for them to access that. So, any curb cuts along those lines, any kind of, any de-inference construction, it's going to have to go through public works and joint, and, excuse me, public works and engineering.
I have a question mark. Mr. Hanley, I have a question for you. That particular lot, well, that particular property has a lot of huge and very old oak trees. Are they going to be allowed to, to cut them down?
Under apparent orders to, this single-family subdivision does not have a tree ordinance on it.
Okay, so that, those beautiful oak trees are going to be gone, okay, yeah.
Any other questions of staff? I have a question then, about what I talked about earlier. What do we call in the road? What type road is that that goes, that hits into Demery, out of the subdivision? Is that a collector, a minor road, or a major road?
It's a minor, minor street.
It's a minor street because of...
It's a dead end, it has, uh, no connections to it, and has 10 lots off of it.
That, that makes it a minor street, all right.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions of staff? Would applicant, excuse me?
Traffic. That, that's, that's a blind area right there also, coming out of Demery right there. Has anything been studied about traffic in that particular area?
That, that's why we aligned it with the, the street across, across the way from it directly, so there's no zigzag. Uh, both the, the public works department and our county engineer have looked at this, this location and have recommended its approval on this location.
Other questions of staff? Applicant?
Uh, my name is Tople Hill. Um, I am with Shoup Surveying, and our firm prepared this preliminary plat, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have in regards to the plat.
Tople, I have one question. Uh, what, was there any, was there any thought given to which, which side the street was on? It's just a question, I'm just out of curiosity.
Uh, when we looked at it, by putting the street on the, the northerly property line, those houses that are real close would actually have a little bit of a buffer with the, you know, with the, um, with the shoulder of the road, where if we flipped it the other way, they'd be right up against the fence possibly. And also, there was a lot of, you know, the property line on the south, uh, for somebody with a new yard, a little bit more attractive along that side.
So, so it was, it was based on consideration to the, to the folks next door? Is that, is that what you're saying? To, on, on Brett, on...
And what would be remarkable for our client.
Basedon Lane? Okay, I, I'm just, it, I'm just looking at the configuration. It'll go either way, but I was wondering, just out of curiosity, why you chose one versus another? Oh, and, uh, one other question, too, is on, on lots seven and eight, they're, the, the configuration there is, is awfully tight. Did you all look at a possible footprint?
Now, what could you build there?
For, for a house that might fit on those lots?
Yeah, those are tight, um, but the developer is, is confident he can find a house that would fit on those, those lots.
The oak trees will stay there for a while. Nobody's gonna buy that.
Is, is the principal here tonight?
Uh, he is not.
Could you tell me who the principals are of, uh, 1317 Demery LLC?
Lance Toland, Jr.
How you spell that last name?
Uh, T-O-L-A-N-D.
Just finally, one question I have, maybe I don't know, gotcha. Does this subdivision doesn't go into 2030 pump station? It's got its own up that way someplace?
Yes, sir. It goes in between the, the two. 2030 is from, like, Retreat and McDonald's in that area.
There's another one up that grade someplace.
And there's another one down this way that pumps in through there, and then 2032 is up at, uh, between Harringtons, and takes care of the north end of the island.
Question?
Yes.
Um, the JWC, one of its comments is, the depth of the sanitary sewers at the point of contact may be an issue in serving the units of the rear of the property. Could you address that, please?
Uh, I would have to defer that to the engineer.
Is it here? There we go.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Pete Show now. We're tidewater engineering. Um, we did look at that, Miss Desiree. Um, I think it'll, I think gravity will work. Uh, it's, uh, I don't have the survey in front of me, but I think it's about six feet deep there, and it's very... floor at 10 feet above sea level. David, when are those maps going to effect? Do we know that?
About a year from now.
About a year from now. So depending on construction, they'll probably want to be up a little bit anyway. So I think we'll have, I think we'll have enough cover right now. I haven't done a detailed engineering study on it, just ran, ran some pretty quick, rough numbers. If not, we'll have to go some kind of a force-mang system, if it comes down to that. But we, we hope to do gravity, if we can.
Well, see, where would you build the force-mang, if you had to do something like that? I mean, you've already got these lots split up like this.
Could be individual grinder stations, E1 system.
Oh, my.
What about drainage?
I'm sorry?
What about drainage?
Oh, well, I spent a lot of time, Paul Andrews actually marched around out there, and I got a lot of the old drainage studies from, I forget what it's called, right next to the south of it. I don't think it's called Harbor Buxton anymore, is it? Anyway, we've got drainage studies there. Yeah, Demery Moss condominiums. And we analyzed the capacity, what's left in Demery, based on what's going in there right now. And I think I've got room in that common area to have sufficient detention to get the water in Demery with sufficient capacity to get down to ditch about, I don't know, 200 feet, I think, to the north, to hit the airport ditch. And the county's very confident there's capacity in that ditch.
And so, so you will be, so you've got drainage structure you can tie in?
There is a pipe drainage system on the west side of Demery there, between us and, again, the airport ditch.
The airport moat, almost.
Yeah, exactly.
You're talking about the airport moat that's on Demery and not the one on Sky Lane?
The one on Sky Lane, actually. So since we're on the left side of, the, the pipe system that's on the west side of Demery dumped out into that ditch that starts on the east side of Sky Lane, and then travels west and north.
During heavy rains, that particular ditch fills very rapidly.
Most places on St. Simon's do, we're finding that, I don't know, but that's why we're going to do a pre-imposed and analysis and make sure that we, we address those issues. I guess I've already spent a lot of time with the county engineer on this one, because it's not, it's not the easiest profit.
And I can also affirm that, when it rains, the sidewalk from where you're speaking of, all the way down to Sky Lane, or based in, I should say, floods.
So I think it's too much, it's too dangerous around here for people.
And I'm, personally, you know, I know that might be ahead of the game, but I'm just really concerned because that is a very narrow spot. And if you go out there, I think I've seen you out there, but the cars that come around there like that, it's, it's just very, very, very dangerous, you know? And I personally would like to know how that would be addressed.
Well, we have, we have certain criteria for sight distance, once we're, if our car's standing at the intersection, sight triangles, and we've got, we've got to show that we've got sufficient sight distance to see the oncoming traffic. And we all, again, you know, one of the fundamental things we're doing there is lining up with Thompson Cove. That's, that's, it has to be that way, and we are able to accommodate that with this lot.
And this may be a question of the staff, but is there a setback requirement on the back end of these houses?
Seven, seven feet.
So, so there's?
It's standard setback, because it's standard zoning. Both, both the, the GR does not require a buffer from the R6 or vice versa.
And it appears the road is two feet, two feet from the back of the other people's property?
That is correct. We left some room there, because we have to put a fence there, and it can't be in the right way, so that was the purpose of that two-foot, right, David?
Yes.
To physically, legally build that fence or wall, we needed, we needed that common space there.
What's it going to be made of?
Do you plan to specify what the fence was going to be made of?
It was, it was left there for his optimal.
The fence will be all the way around, on both sides?
Not necessarily. We'll, we'll meet both requirements. I can't speak exactly on, I can't make any commitments on the specifics on a fence or a wall, right now.
Hmm.
It's not my money.
Any other questions of the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a motion, and we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion on the motion.
Do you want to ask for comment?
Yeah. We have a motion to approve. Are there any, anybody out here would like to say anything? We'll open it up for discussion. Again, it's not a public hearing, so just ask questions if you would, please.
My name is Bill Guzman, and I live up the road here on, just on Demery. My question is, before you vote on this thing, were you aware that lift station 13 broke down last week, and we had sewage flowing down Demery Road extensively? If you've driven past the little Boy Scout hut, and you notice that white powder that's out there, that's what joint water and sewer sprinkled on the ground to solve the problem. This lift station has been a problem for years. Robert doesn't live too far. We have to turn around that corner every day and smell the sewer gas that's coming up out of there. And now we're talking about adding 10 more houses that are going to attach to the same system that's not working. And I don't know the exact details. My neighbor, Mr. Allison, knows more of the details of what exactly occurred there. I showed up when the toilet paper was up in the trees, and he could attest to how it started and how it impacted his home that day. So I'll turn the mic over to my neighbor, Mr. Allison.
I didn't realize I was going to get elected tonight. I have been in my home for 27 years, and the first year I bought it, I awoke to what sounded like a train whistle, and I couldn't breathe, and I kicked a window out to get air. And what had happened was, the lift station down at Frederica had stopped, and all of that air and that sewer pipe had no place to go but out my toilet and my sinks. I put the house on the market, but talked to the Joint Sewer Commission, and they let me know that the sewer pipe was going to be replaced, which was great. And that solved the problem for a couple of years, and I'm going to guess, last time we had a huge rain, eight or nine years ago, I started trying to ditch water out of my yard, but because Demery Road had been raised up, and when they put the sidewalk in back in the late 60s, that put a little bowl in my yard. And that time, I got probably 10,000 or 15,000 gallons of raw sewage in my yard. And I'm sorry, ladies and gentlemen, but I rate prophylactics and ladies' stuff for Went back to y'all, and you were kind enough to put a drain in my yard, so that when the sewage comes down for the lift station, it goes out of my yard and into the marsh. About seven years ago, I called the EPA, because at this lift box, and correct me if I'm wrong, but there are four sewage pipes coming in right there at Demery and East Beach Causeway. Is that correct, David? Are there four pipes in there?
I don't know. The chairman of the joint plant, plant committee, or the Joint Sewer Commission just left.
Okay. Well, okay. They opened the sewer lid and let me look, and I saw at least three. But at any rate, that was rebuilt, I'm guessing, 25, 26 years ago. But there's so much sewage gas in there, what they explained to me last week, they've been in my yard for the last eight or nine days, that that hydrogen chloride has just eaten that whole collection station. And anybody that walks or rides a bicycle knows, when you go by East Beach Causeway, you hold your nose. This last incident, I don't know, I saw a toilet paper in the trees, but I saw some other stuff. I was, I was trying to drain my backyard and clear my ditches to what, what they provided me to get the water out of my yard. And by the time I got to the front yard, I suddenly realized I wasn't walking in water anymore. And I cloxed my feet and put on my boots and went up to see where it was coming from. And the sewage was blowing out of the sewer lid at East Beach Causeway and was going a good six to eight feet in the air. And along with it were all the things you might imagine would be in sewage, and I'm still liming my yard with white powder, trying to keep that bacteria down. So I have no opposition to a man who owns property to build on it, but I have an opposition that if he can't, if we can't provide for that sewage to get out. So I would say I am only against it because we don't have the capacity to, to carry the sewage that we've had for the last 10 years. So I would just like to know if there's a plan to improve the sewer system, and then I would be all for it.
Chairman returns.
And I've talked too much.
Yes, sir.
Mark Harrison, I've stated my address before. I just have a question. Mr. Miller, a little bit ago, stated there's 900 platted lots already over here. Is that true?
Smith?
With respect to, to lift station 2032, there's 900 in, in that, that basis.
Why are we even considering any plat approval when this is a health and safety issue? That's, that's what I don't understand. To me, this is a health and safety issue, which should be foremost. Are there any county commissioners here tonight, or are they too afraid to come to these meetings?
Is that platted or could be platted?
Platted.
There's vacant lots. There's vacant lots everywhere.
It just doesn't make sense to me that these people sitting on this board here would be approving plats when it's health and safety issue. Y'all must not care about the people.
Julian Smith, 61 Maxwell Avenue, again. I have another question. Is there anything that would stop you tonight from defying this item until you have a definitive answer from the Joint Water and Sewer Commission, or from the county health officer, having to do with the appropriateness of approving this, this application before you have answers and solutions, before the county can guarantee that butters are not going to have sewage in their yards? Particularly if 10 more houses with, what, 25 or 30 people in them are going to be flushing toilets into, not leading to that lift station? So that's my question. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Elliott. Mr. Elliott, would you?
EPD requires us to report any spills or releases that we have in the area.
Tell us, state your name for a good.
Okay, Elliot. I'm the chairman of the Joint Water Sewer Commission. I could start off. The EPD, at our permit, requires us to report any spills or releases. A spill is when it goes into a water system, or releases when it's on the ground. I checked with Steve Swan while the gentlemen were talking to see if we had a spill in that at lift station 2030, I mean, correction, 2013. And he told me that, no, there were problems over there, but the overflow was from drainage and not the sewer system.
Would it be not?
I can only tell you what the engineer and the executive director determined when they went over to the area.
They were standing on tampons, sir.
I'm not going to tell you that.
I was there, she was there.
Sorry, sorry.
That's too much.
If you're confident that there was a spill, please come down and we'll talk to you about it.
I called the EPA last time, and that's on record.
Okay. There are, we have a five-year master plan that we're starting to review now. There are many water and sewer adjustments, fixes, repairs, expansions that are required. And over the next five years, we have to spend approximately $22,500 to repair the St. Simon's Island water sewer system. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
When are we going to get a gift? Can I add a card?
Do we have a motion?
Any other discussion? Any other questions? Mr. Chairman, I have referred to the motion that, when do we stop digging holes deeper?
Do we, we have a motion? Do we have a motion? We have a motion to approve. Is that correct? We have a motion to approve PP 3145, which is, again, a preliminary plat, correct? Yes, preliminary plat. Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to maybe, once again, explain what the preliminary plat is. And it's nothing more than an acknowledgement that the zoning is in place and that the configuration of the subdivision is proper, based on the zoning. That's all. Everything else that has to go on with that subdivision, to include water and sewer engineering, the drainage engineering, and all of that, comes after us. And, and so for us to say that it doesn't meet, denial means that it doesn't meet the zoning. And so by, by that fact, if it meets all the zoning requirements, not the engineering requirements, then, then it's proper and it should be approved. That was, that was the basis of my motion.
And I disagree with that thoroughly.
But that's, you need to read the ordinance, Mr. Humphries.
No, you need to.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor of the, of the motion to approve PP 3145, signal in favor, raise a hand. Three, those opposed? Free? Motion?
You'll raise your hand.
Oh, you, excuse me, four to three? Okay, motion fails. It is not approved. Now, for the.
It means we don't have a motion, Mr. Chairman.
It was four to three, yeah, that's correct. We didn't.
We don't have any action.
No action, yes.
Okay, so we need a motion to deny?
Yes.
Okay, I make a motion to deny application PP 3145.
Thank you.
No, I'm making a motion to deny. And he seconds it.
Davis, this one, where we have to state our reasons?
We have to state the reasons for the denial. What needs to be done to the plat?
Let's, we're volunteers, if you deny it, I would like written, I want you to write, we have to write down what the reasons are to put in the record.
Have to write it down?
Yes, we have to have written. Yes, we have to have written. We have to have a written, we can tell her and she can put it in a minute. Right? Yeah. Let's make the, let's decide what, and then we need to state your reasons for denial. That's what it says in there. You have to make a written statement of why we deny it, as I recall. Right, David?
Yes, sir. For 704.
And good enough to stand up in court. All right, those in favor of making a motion to deny?
Well, somebody's got to make the motion.
She did. We had a motion.
Mr. Lawrence, seconded.
We've got a motion and a second. Motion deny application PP 3145. Those in favor of that motion signify with a raise of hands. Two.
Wait to.
It's two to deny.
Motion to deny.
Motion to deny the application.
Okay.
Four to four. Those opposed? Three. Now, would you kindly state your reasons?
So the motion passed, not, the motion passed to deny.
Motion passed and I need, we need to have your reasons for the denial.
My reason is public safety.
Mine is sanitation.
Public safety and traffic.
You got to cite the ordinance, you got to cite the ordinance that is in application for that.
I don't have it in front of me.
Because there isn't an ordinance for those two items that are preliminary.
Well, let me.
703.
It makes it very difficult to deny something that you don't think is right.
Look at the preamble to the zoning ordinance.
Yeah.
All there in the preamble, having to do with health and safety.
That's right. So, yeah. Must indicate where the streets are to be poligrosscape. Well, this is like whether the, it meets the plat requirement?
Yes, that's what we've been saying for years. That's our problem.
Well.
We have to go by what the ordinance says, and the ordinance gives us the reasons that we can deny and the reasons for approval.
Well, I can't, I can't imagine that you can't deny something on public health and safety issues. Is that what we're saying?
That preliminary plat, a preliminary plat, correct. When it goes to construction, yeah, it gets to be different reasons. Preliminary plat, you have specific reasons that you can deny it.
Mr. Chairman, trying to do something here, I suggest that we give time for the research to identify the substantive ordinance requirement. We can't do something on, tonight, that we're not prepared.
You should have that in front of you at the time you make a motion to defer.
Well, then, if that's the case, then I would suggest that you tell Mr. Hanley's office to get us the information in a timely fashion, so we can do enough research to have the information down. If that's the case.
Well, I, I'm a little, you know, you say it's a preliminary plat, and I see, I can read these things and so forth, and you're saying that I have to pick out, it doesn't have the proper name, address, the survey isn't signed, the this, and this, and that, and this, and so. And because it's a six, it's an R6, it's allowed six thousand, all these lots, no matter that it's a safety issue. Is that what I'm saying? Is that what you're saying?
That's.
Regardless of whether it's a safety issue, I have to still go ahead and approve it, the preliminary plat.
But at the engineering, at the engineering phase, is when, is when the water, the sewer, the drainage, and all of those things would be reviewed and approved. Unfortunately, or I guess it's unfortunate, that doesn't come before us. We don't get a chance to review, review those plans, the engineering plans. That's when all of that would come up. The proper, the proper size of sewer lines, the proper depths, the ditches, all of those issues come up during the engineering phase. The preliminary plat is nothing more than a knowledge of the zoning.
Okay, so we've got a preliminary plat here, we've got an R6 zone area, and so I'm just supposed to say, okay, the fact that I think that's too much congestion and too many cars coming out on that particular danger spot, I don't get to deny that based on that?
No.
And what is the purpose of the Anna Planet Commission?
If I can't do it on the public safety issues, then.
Well, it's.
It's like a rubber stamp.
Well, the subdivision happened at the time the property was zoned. That's when the subdivision was theorized. The actual configuration, which is all that we're voting on, happens at preliminary plat. But the lots, and the number of lots, all happened when it was zoned, and I guess the zoning, in this case, probably happened 50, 60, 70 years ago.
So everything that's on R6 is allowed to put, regardless of that our roads can't do it, regardless that our water and sewer can't handle it, regardless that it's in a dangerous situation where they're going to hit ingress and egress, regardless of all that, we have to approve it in a preliminary plat because it's an R6.
Unless, unless we can somehow go back and say, and take the zoning away. And that's been a big issue all along. That's, that's why we're all wringing our hands occasionally about what to do with these things. Property that's been zoned, they have a right, it's called right of use, by the way. Zoning is a right of use.
Yes.
And R6 is, for this property, is a right of use. It is a right for those people to use that property for that use.
Let me just say, though, the overriding, there's something that overrides all that to me. And that's the public health and welfare and safety. That has to override all this stuff.
It should, but when you've got evil developers, you can't do anything.
No, sir, please, please.
Well, that's what it's come down to, ma'am.
Oh, well, I'm not talking about an evil developer. I'm talking about a safety issue. I'm talking about a safety issue, you know. And that's, to me, it's, in this particular area, that's too much traffic to come out at that spot.
Watson, may I suggest that we look at Article 1 of the Glen County ordinances, which states that in accordance with a comprehensive plan and pursuant authority granted by Article 9, Section 2, Paragraph 1 of the Constitution of the State of Georgia, and for the purpose of promoting the health, safety, morals, convenience, order, prosperity, or general welfare for the present and future inhabitants of an unincorporated portion of Glen County, lessening congestion, securing safety from fire and panic, and other dangers, providing adequate light and air, preventing the ever clouding of land, avoiding undue concentration of population, facilitating the adequate provision of transportation, water, sewage parks, sewers, parks, and other public environments. And I could go on, but this clearly answers your question about the provision and the ordinance for us to take action.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Based on what has been expressed this evening, I need someone, either yourself or Mr. Esri, to explain to me the purpose of the Anna Planet Commission. If we, if everything is, fits to the ordinance, we cannot deny it if, in fact, it's a public, it's not for the betterment of the community. I just need, I just, I just need, so I need to know, so that I, I won't have any negative comments. I'll just say, approve, approve, approve. I just do not understand. So can you please explain it to me?
To the way it's been explained to me. Our purpose is to ensure that, that those subdivisions meet our ordinances, that the preliminary plat meets the ordinance, that it is the proper zoning, that the lots, that it meets all the zoning requirements for that R6. That if it meets all that, the way that, the way it's written, don't blame us for that, that's the way the ordinances are written. I'm not, I'm not writing them. The reason, no, I'm not, I'm just saying that folks out here are thinking that we, we didn't make those decisions from that standpoint. You have ordinances written, and everybody out here's got a house built, and they follow that ordinance. They got a house, and they use the sewer lines, but nobody else can use one. This is where our problems come, is the right of use, as Robert said. Our goal is to make sure that what is planned, the way I read it, is according to what the ordinance says.
So Watson, I suggest you refer to Article 1 of the Glen County ordinances to support your motion.
I would like to take Mr. Kirkendall's comments a step further. It's after a piece of property is zoned, and the county is deemed that the property is property zoned, then it's the obligation of the county to extend service. Now, on occasion, zonings are contingent upon developers doing certain things. In the cases of these infill, these infill things, these infill subdivisions that we're seeing pop up now, the county has, over the years, has not addressed that. And that's where, that's, that's some of the issues now. That's where our water and sewers is going around, and they're doing their surveys, and they've got a, sounds like a very large, at least financially, program to improve the water and sewer, to take care of all of this. But our, our part of that is really sort of simple. I mean, it's, all we have to look at, all we were given to look at is our ordinance, and whether or not subdivision meets those ordinances.
Yeah, from the standpoint, whether we vote for, I'm talking for myself only now, because I vote for something doesn't mean I like it. I vote for things based on what the ordinance tells me is required. And a lot of them that come up that I don't like, that I just do not have, I don't, I don't have anybody that works here, I don't need another person on this island. But other people do. Other people own land, they've owned, they've owned property for 50 years, and they want to come here and build, and they, they have a piece of land that was zoned, they have a right to build on that piece of land. And so I, I have to vote myself on what the ordinance tells me is going on. I'm talking for myself only.
Mr. Chairman, what has already been taken? What's the discussion?
The discussion was that we got to have the reasons, and what the reasons written down, and you said what the reasons were with safety, and that doesn't, the ordinance don't say that's the reason, but that's fine. That's what you want to put down, and if you want to leave your vote like it is and put that down, fine.
Safety, health, and welfare, that's fine. And his was sanitation. And I don't know what, his is Article 1 or something, I mean, no, I don't know.
Article 1 is in the zoning regulations.
Or whatever he's talking about.
Yes.
This is governed by the subdivision regulations.
Different than that.
Well, give me time, and I'll find something.
Well, I just want to say, if there's anyone who, after listening to this dialogue, who voted to deny this, the proper thing would be to them, they can bring up to rescind that motion and then make another motion. But it would take a person who.
Voted for.
Who voted for denial. Excuse me, it would take a person who voted for denial to bring up the motion, to rescind that motion, take a vote on this, yes, sir, take a vote on that, and then go for, for another vote.
The proper procedure is a motion to reconsider. That motion can be made by any person who voted on the prevailing side.
Correct. That's what she said.
That's just what I said.
That's what she said.
But rescind, it's not a motion to rescind. You take the vote again.
And no one's willing to do that, I presume. So we're going to leave it as it is and defend what happens when it happens. Next item on the agenda is, if I got it right. VP 3138, 315 Mallory Street, Savannah Bee Company, consider approval of an additional window sign to entrance door of the business. The building is located at 315 Mallory Street, Island Preservation District, parcel ID 0408623. Heather Dorn, authorized agent, and applicant for Shirley Lost and owner. Staff?
Good evening, I'm Julie Grimigan. This parcel is located on the first block, north side of Mallory Street, going into the Island Village shopping area, and zoned village misuse. The applicant is requesting to add an off-white decal measuring 18 by 23 inches to the entrance of the retail store. The decal is considered the third sign for the business, and the design is consistent with the two signs that were granted in September. This is a separate application because I received a request 15 days later to add an additional logo to the door. The applicant requests that you consider approval to add a window decal to the entrance of the door of the existing business. The proposed window decal meets the sign criteria for the village preservation overlay. The possible motions are to approve application VP 3138, move to deny, or move to defer. Do you have any questions from the applicant?
Any questions of staff? No questions of staff? Applicant like to make a statement?
I don't know. Actually, I did have a question.
Staff. Can you state your name and ask us to approve it or something, please?
My name is Meg Conway. I'm with Savannah Bee, and will you please approve my door sign?
All right, thank you. Any questions of her? She has a question of staff or somebody?
Well, of staff, actually. There's an X on one side of the door. Are we only doing one sign?
We're only doing one because that would consider four signs, four business signs. So they're only allowed three.
You okay with that?
I'm perfectly fine with that.
That's silly.
Okay, any other questions of applicant or staff? Thank you, ma'am. Again, it's not a public hearing. Does anybody would like to say anything about the sign? I move we approve.
Second.
Got a motion to. VP 3138, we allow window decal at 315 Mallory. Got a motion as second. All those in favor signify with a raise of hands. Annalee.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to just make a comment. I agree with what the chairman said about this preliminary plat. There's some things that we don't like, but, you know, I'm all for private property rights. And I'm not for denying somebody a right to develop their property according to the owner. Now, these other issues will be addressed down the road, and if they don't get addressed, nothing happens, not supposed to happen. Now, I'm not saying it hadn't done that before, but, you know, I'm all for the land trust and people joining together to buy property, to set it aside. That's the only way that's going to stop some of this. So, you know, just, a lot of these problems we're dealing with today happened 50 years ago in the zoning. I don't think you're going to see this commission increase density in any areas. We're not going to take an R6, I mean, R12, and turn it into an R6 and things like that. But a lot of these things, well, you know, we've just got to go by the ordinances, as Mr. Esri said, and so, some things that we don't like, some things that we just have to do sometimes.
You can always fall back on what Stan was saying.
Mr. Hanley, do we need to approve that, is that next month to, I got one more thing, but the schedule, our next year's schedule?
You can look at it some more. If you need any more comments, you can approve it next month.
Okay. At this time, I'd like to appoint a nominating committee for election of officers. Mr. Willis and Mr. Esri.
I remember. Yeah, me too. I don't get it.
Anybody have anything else? We stand adjourned.
I'll make a presentation, too.